One flag of stands for Roblox.
Get to the side.
I'd like to call the Monday, November tenth regular scheduled meeting of the Lorraine High, the Lorraine Board of Education to order. Call the roll please.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mrs. Washington.
Present.
Dr. Ballard.
Here.
Mrs. Nazario.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Pledge to the flag, I don't know.
Yeah, good evening. Excited to welcome Ms. Shorts and Hawthorne to the meeting tonight. They're going to talk about one of their new clubs and parent engagement. So if we could have Ms. Shorts, do you mind coming up with the students and lead us in the pledge and then get to the presentation? You brought everybody. I like that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Nice job. Very good. You go wait guys.
So I'm going to tell you who came up to the front. So we had Douglas Holtz. He's a fifth grade student and the son of Florence Carroll. Doug loves sports and he's especially happy about wrestling. He's a member of the Unified Club. Doug, can you wave everybody? Then we had Amaje Peyton Thomas. He's a third grade student and the son of Rachel Bowers and Amaje Peyton Thomas. Amaje's favorite subject is math and his favorite hobbies are sports and hanging out with his friends. Amaje! Then we have Hayes Halitska. He's a third grade student and the son of Shay Halitska. Hayes is extremely artistic. He enjoys building, drawing, creating, and playing Minecraft. Please give everybody a wave. Then we had Trey McCall. He's a third grade student and the son of Sidney Hitchens and Jerry King. Trey's favorite subjects are math and science. He loves to play basketball, football, and Roblox. Trey!
What's up Trey?
Then we had Aria Gordon. She's a third grade student and the daughter of Gloria Rosado. Aria's favorite subject is English and she enjoys coloring. Where you at, Aria? And then we had Kyle, Kalio, and Caleb Hampton. Kyle is a third grade student. Kalio and Caleb are in fourth grade. They're the sons of Nicole Hall. They enjoy games and basketball and are members of Safety Patrol. Wave your hands, boys. Then we had Jeremiah Lewis. He's a fourth grade student and the son of Ilya Maldonado. Jeremiah's favorite subjects are math and science. His hobbies are playing soccer and drawing and he's also a member of our Safety Patrol. Now we're going to have Mrs. Lori Piers-Goodwin come up and talk about Unified Club.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm short, but not that short. So I'm Lori Piers-Goodwin and I teach moderate to intensive classroom at Hawthorne and I want to, I'm starting a Unified Club at Hawthorne. So the purpose of the Unified Club is basically to celebrate differences, celebrate our uniqueness. As the teacher with moderate to intensive classroom, some of the non-special ed students, the gen ed students will come down with our classroom. We're going to do projects together. We're going to, we're also starting Hawthorne Helpers where we're going to help out around the school with different jobs, working together. But the biggest thing is celebrating our differences, working together, and seeing what all we can accomplish when we are all on the same page and appreciating everyone and all of their assets.
Thank you for that.
I just want to say real quick to you, I need to catch up, I'm sorry.
And welcome home.
Thank you.
Kind of rise up to, Toy, I think you're amazing. Lori, for those of you who don't know, Lori and her husband cabinet is also at Hawthorne. Were in the district for many, many years. They left and did some traveling, Korea, Panama, and kind of saw the world and kept teaching and came back home. But they are both known for creating and supporting and organizing amazing clubs like this. So I'm excited to see what happens at Hawthorne. Thank you all for coming in and leading us with the pledge. Thanks to your families coming showing them off. But if we could, maybe all come up front so we get one big picture.
We got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, please, yeah.
Good evening everyone. My name is Matt Davis and I teach third grade at Hawthorne Elementary School along with my wife who's unable to be here tonight. I was asked by Principal Shorts to speak with you about how my wife and I have successfully increased parent engagement in our classrooms and I'm pleased to share our approach. Our fundamental strategy has been twofold. First, we prioritize creating a welcoming environment where every student and parent feels accepted, appreciated, and valued. This foundation of trust is essential. Secondly, we implemented consistent, accessible communication. We connect with parents daily and leverage class story on ClassDojo to provide a virtual window into our classrooms. We advertise what's happening daily and inform families of upcoming events with direct updates. The results of this deliberate effort have been remarkable. We have seen a substantial increase not only in the number of volunteers, but also in the depth and variety of their involvement. Our examples of engagement this year include: We maintain a true open door policy. Parents are always welcome to visit, observe, and participate in learning alongside with their child. Parents regularly join their children for lunch. Parents volunteer to lead and officiate games during recess, providing valuable supervision and positive interaction. Parents are active partners in learning, helping to conduct science investigations and providing necessary materials when needed. Parent support for our field trips has been tremendous. We had five parents chaperone our field trip to Severance Hall and five also chaperoned our most recent field trip to the Cleveland Museum of Natural History and parents are already inquiring about chaperoning our next field trip in December to Playhouse Square. And most recently, a parent offered to purchase a new class pet after our class buddy died unexpectedly, which is a true demonstration of shared community. The true takeaway tonight is this: Parent involvement is not simply about getting help. It's about building a shared educational community. By consistently communicating and making our classrooms truly welcoming, we are turning parents into essential partners. Thank you, parents. And all my parents, if you could raise your hands please. There we go. A lot of our parents back there, they've been on our field trips. They're the ones who I'm talking about here. So they can tell you all that goes on in our classrooms. So we thank you, the dedicated families of Hawthorne, to make, you know, your child's education in third grade eight sincere success. And we thank you for everything that you do. Appreciate it.
Matt, thank you for your leadership. Amazing. I appreciate the fact that you distinguished solidly that there's a difference between communication, in other words, shared community and engagement. So parents, I want to thank you for being a part of that. And if we could be more of that on a district level, help us be more open to that. So we are, we're there. But in the meantime, if you can come on up, kids and your families, let's get a picture taken, and our teachers.
Are everybody ready? One, two, three, one more. One, two, three, here.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you. Now heating gets significantly more boring after this, so if you want to make a run for it, please for it.
There's not enough room there now.
I know.
We are, I was afraid I was going to knock.
Maybe next week we'll be back, we'll be back on our center.
What we need is tape on the floor.
Well, one of the cuts.
There you go.
It is time for the first hearing of the public. Before we get into that, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we did state that this would be a meeting for discussion or for comment about Dr. Graham's retire rehire. That is not this time. That it is, it is on, the agenda later as 13.1 a separate item just for that. So we encourage anyone who'd like to speak to come up, but if it concerns Dr. Graham's retire rehire, please wait till later in the meeting. Put a damper on that, didn't I? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve or amend the minutes of the October 27th meeting, waiving the right to read the minutes.
So moved.
Discussion, roll call please.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend the order.
So moved.
Roll call please.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
And I entertain a motion to go into executive session for A2 employment. This will be brief and we will complete the meeting when we return. We won't be, can't be long.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
For your patients, at this point I would entertain a motion to exit executive session and resume the regular agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
No.
And Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Any old business. Hearing none. Reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
I have items eight point zero one through eight point zero three for approval.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Thirty-two thousand and forty-eight dollars. I think that is a new one board meeting record. Thank you to all of our community partners, too many to list, but that is just absolutely incredible. Roll call.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Okay. Reports and recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank our community, our voters, for supporting two renewal levies last week. It was huge for the district, as I mentioned many times. That was, that was for survival. Those mills were accounted for approximately fifteen percent of our budget. That's coming on the heels of us just cutting about seven and a half million dollars last year and the year before. But it's still just, it's a big step, and I don't want to devalue it, but it's the first step of many. We are still looking at a deficit next year of twelve million dollars, which means we can't pay our bills next year. We do have a plan we're working on that will also engage our community to listen to your priorities. And I also know that that number is much larger than what we demonstrated back in the spring. And that's because the numbers changed. From where we were in the spring, we looked for a new money levy last year. We were not successful. But we're looking at a six million dollar deficit roughly for this year. But what happened from May to early July, federal government cut us by just shy of a million. Our state government cut us by four point one million, and our local government, county commissioners, voted and cost us another million. So that totaled about six million dollars that we were planning on having because we were told to plan on having it, and they took it. So again, we have to come up with a plan. These are all the, the people have to live by. But for us, the general fund consists of property tax and state money from, or money from the state. And the state share has not kept up with inflation, according to a study that the Buckeye Association of School Administrators did. Over the last twenty years, they've not kept up with inflation. So, and we have not passed a levy in our district, I say ours because I live here too. We have not passed a new money levy in the district, except for a small one in two thousand twelve of three mills. We haven't passed a levy in thirty-four years. So we are looking at, moving forward again, we need to, we need to make a lot of cuts coming for the following year. And we'll keep you engaged, we'll keep you apprised, we'll keep you in the loop. But we're also going to look to put up a new money levy in the spring and hope to get your support there as well. So again, we'll keep you educated, keep you in the loop, and thanks for your support with our renewals. I do want to invite up Linda Code. She's our director, she's executive director of Exceptional Children. And for, just to kind of get it set up here a little bit, as most of you know, there are some students whose needs are so extreme that they cannot be met in traditional schools. So we find the expertise and we, or different schools, different places, where the children can receive the services they need. And we are looking at maybe doing some of that in-house. So could update folks on where we are?
Absolutely. So thanks for today and this opportunity to talk to you all. We are exploring this idea of maybe opening up a building that would serve primarily students with autism with significant needs. I'll kind of go into the why throughout the presentation. So this is the current layout of how we support and service our students with autism, kind of the continuum. So if you know about education, you know that students with disabilities were required to provide a continuum of different services. So the least restrictive environment is always the general education classroom with supports that are brought to them. The secondary would be a special education mild-moderate classroom. This is a resource room where they would go and get, you know, targeted skills and supports inside, but they would generally be given their core content either in the gen ed or the resource room. So it's kind of a hybrid schedule. As we become more restrictive, we go to more of a self-contained classroom, which is a special education, what we call moderate intensive, or formerly known as M.D. classrooms. So these are students with more significant needs, both academically, socially, communication, have related services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, et cetera. We did probably about twenty years ago start opening up self-contained rooms that service primarily only students with autism. So I'll talk a little bit about what those look like in a little bit. But the most restrictive right now is separate facilities. So once we deem, you know, an IEP team comes together and decides that their, their needs are far beyond what we have within our system, we look at separate facilities, and those facilities have a lot more supports in place to serve those students. So some, a little bit about our current data, about twenty-two, we have twenty-two special education classrooms that would be considered moderate intensive, and that is pre-K through twelve. In the last two years, we've opened up ten new classrooms. So this is speaking to the volume that we're seeing of increasing of students being identified with significant needs, primarily with the identification of autism. We have seven classrooms currently in district that are that special education classroom that serve only students with autism. What I think is really important to point out to you guys today is what we are currently spending. So in the state of Ohio, you know that we have Ed Choice, and one of those Ed Choice options are scholarships. And so we have the Autism Scholarship and John Peterson Scholarship. Currently, we have ninety students, ninety families who have opted for the autism scholarship. And so there's different providers throughout the city, throughout the county, and even beyond into Cuyahoga and Sandusky Huron area. But we have ninety currently that access that. For each student with autism, that takes thirty-four thousand dollars per student and flows right from our district into that provider's hands, basically, and into their budget. So currently, that's about three million dollars. We have about thirty-four students with autism who are directly placed into that separate facility, that most restrictive setting. So that is ranging around sixty-four thousand to a hundred and forty-three thousand per student is the tuition that we pay. So that total tuition is around two million dollars, a little over two point one million dollars. And then the transportation is estimated around one point five million dollars. So total cost outside, not inside, that we are paying is around six point seven million dollars. It's a big cost. Before I get to Mentor Cares, we had a student that was pretty significant, and we were really struggling as a team to find him a separate facility that would take him. He was described as being a five-person restraint. He had no language, and nobody, not any of, even the separate facilities, would offer him a space or a place to be educated. So we really started to try, try to think outside the box. And we found what's called Mentor Cares. I'm going to share that with you today. It's the only, that I know of, public school system that has created their own separate facility within their school system. And so when we started to explore that idea for this particular student, we didn't end up there with him, but the idea really sparked my interest. So when we came up with this idea of possibly talking about opening up our own building, I told Dr. Graham, I am aware of a public school setting that does function like this, and I would love for us to go visit it. So we did set up a walk-through, and it was October thirtieth. So a bunch of us went, and we got to go visit quite a spectacular program that we, I think we were all pretty impressed by. So Mentor Care stands for Cardinal, which is their mascot, Autism Resource and Education School. So they started this school about fifteen years ago, and for the exact same reasons we're thinking about this currently. The cost for separate facility has gone up immensely. And more importantly, their students were really separated from their communities. Right now, as far as separate facilities, none of them are in Lorraine County for us. We send our students out to Cuyahoga County. So that connection for their communities is, is pretty much lost. So, oh, let me go back, sorry. I guess, yeah, I got it. Yep. So what Mentor did was they were closing an elementary building, and they said, okay, Mentor Cares, this is, Kristy La Paglia is her name, she's their director, we will give you this, this building. And then they loaned her two point five million dollars to get her budget up and running. So that was renovations, her staff. And what they did is kind of unique, and I don't know if anybody wants to help explain it or to hear anybody, but they did a loan, even though it's a public school system into a school that is ran by their public school system, they really do operate by itself financially, it has their own budget. So they loaned the two point five million dollars, and they said, you have five years to pay that loan back. They actually did it within three years. So they operate on their own, they're completely self-sustaining, but they are part of the Mentor City School District. So they do open up their doors to other districts. They have about seventeen districts that they serve in Lake County, Cuyahoga, and other Viaga surrounding areas. They charge around seventy, seventy-two thousand dollars, and then they actually pay in-house fifty-two thousand per student. So it's almost like they pay themselves, if that makes sense. But again, they operate on their own budget. Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Okay. It feels confusing, but yeah.
And I know we're talking a lot about the money part, but again, I think a very, very question, especially after the description I gave right before Linda came up about our current financial situation. When it's, it's going to be, there's two parts to this. One is arrogance, I think, on our part, that we think we can do it better than some of the other places.
Absolutely.
But also, the question's going to be, why are you going to pay for it? So we're not saying that we're doing this to make it, to make money, but we're doing it to demonstrate that it will fund itself.
Yes, thank you for that.
And why they chose to do it that way, I think, was to be very public and open about, here's what we did, and here's how much it costs to run. And they are self-sustaining.
Can I add a sentence? And I don't know anything about this, I mean, you know, a little bit, but I'm learning. But I wanted to add that if we're able to do it, I think we owe, we have that duty to our students to provide the care.
Agree completely. And again, if you remember what Linda said a couple minutes ago, we selected Mentor for one of our students. So this student, a five-person restraint, is going to drive an hour and a half one way because that's the only place that was appropriate. We need to create space here that's appropriate for our students, yeah.
Would, would you have, your last sentence there, the one-on-one, would that happen in Lorraine?
I think we would have to sit down and really create our own financial, like, outline, like, what that looks like for us, but this is how they operate. So if there is a need for a one-on-one, they charge that district. So let's say an outside district, you know, requires that one-on-one, they pay for it directly.
Yeah. You know, I have a grandson that's, that has had the one-on-one in a different, in a different school, and he's just, I'm just, I'm amazed at what, what they've did. They had a teacher in the morning, and then a teacher in the afternoon, still one-on-one.
Had a one-on-one.
But it's amazing what, what they can do.
And I'll share their model, like, currently their staffing. But that is, this is just for Mentor Cares. I don't know, you know, where we'll go, but I look forward to, you know, if you provided that support, then we would create that financial structure.
I can also jump in real quick. You talked about the two point five million dollar startup money, Which we don't anticipate. Yeah.
No, no, not at all. So the current structure for them is they currently serve, oh, go ahead, Jay, sorry.
K-12 or?
Yeah, K-12. Yep. Preschool, 12.
Okay.
Yes. So currently, they serve 84 students, and 35% of those are students from Mentor City Schools, and 65% are out-of-district placement. Through Ohio Revised Code, any classroom of students serving only students with autism is max six. So they have six students in a classroom, one lead teacher, and two support staff members in each classroom. In the building, they also had three BCBAs, two OTs, which is Occupational Therapist, one Coda, which is a Certified OT Assistant, and two SLPs, one Director and one Associate. And then they had one General Education Teacher on staff, and he was responsible for reading all the IEPs. He sat in all the evaluations and IEP meetings as well. So their staff day was 8 to 3:30. They have a really great model in the sense that, once the kids come, every staff member is with the kids from start to end. So from 8:15 to 1:45 is the student day. They eat lunch with their students, and they pretty much don't have breaks throughout that day. When the students leave, from 2:00 to 2:30 is when their break time was, and then from 2:30 to 3:30 is that team collaboration time. So they would collaborate, they would provide professional development to one another, and just overall plan. These are just some pictures of their core principles. One of the biggest ones, I think, we saw was individual schedules. So every child had their own individual schedule for their day, which was supported by visual prompts, and it was pretty spectacular to see. Some of our key takeaways from Mentor Cares that we were impressed by is that every space was intentionally used. There was individual stations for learning, and I'll show you a picture of that here soon. Visual cues in every space. There was natural furniture. So we talked a lot about Regio. And one of the first things I noticed when we went into a classroom is it felt very Regio-like. Everything was natural, it was owned by the student's space, and it just was overall just calm, not a lot of things on the wall, not a lot of color. There was no decorations in the hallway.
Can you just make the connection with Regio, just a little bit more about preschool and kindergarten, and just why that matters?
Yeah. So as we have been exploring Regio and trying to integrate Regio practices into our preschool and kindergarten, you know, one of the main things that they really believe is that, you know, we have to create calm environments, and that we don't need all the primary colors everywhere across the room. We need to create a calm environment by the natural, you know, furniture spaces. What else? Is that good?
Yep.
So there's no decorations in the hallways, and no teacher desks were in the classroom. Teacher desks were in a separate space. They want teachers to engage with students from start to end throughout the day. Acoustics matter was another big one. They had a fire alarm system. Instead of the big loud noise, we've all heard those before, it was a calm voice that just came over the P.A. system and said that there was a fire in the building, please exit. So very calm, quiet. No, all paper towels, no blow dryers in the, in the bathrooms, because that tends to upset students with autism. And there was soundproof paneling in every classroom. So if there was a student who was having a moment, you know, the other classroom next door to them would not be able to hear, you know, maybe some yelling or screaming. Staff expectations, uniforms were required of all the staff, they were provided by them. It's all black, and they had their emblem on the side. No perfume or no scented products, just because that can also trigger some dysregulation. And tattoos were not able to be shown, because that's proven to be pretty distracting to students with autism. Something I thought, I was very impressed by, and I'll show you some pictures again here in a little bit, sensory spaces and their diet was very intentional. So we have current sensory rooms that kind of have a variety of things, but they had separate spaces for everything. So if students need heavy work, which is their seeking sensory, they had different areas throughout the building where they can, they can get that from there. They also had just quiet, calm spaces, and then they had, what they use is called LED lights for just more calming effects to help regulate. And then they also stressed the importance of community engagement. From elementary all the way up to the high school, they go out into the community, they create partnerships. So students who are learning specific skills can generalize that in their own community versus somewhere outside. So here's some of their spaces. I'll try to, I don't know if I can zoom in through on yours, but this is their gym, so you'll see different regulating stations that they use. Here's the classroom. You'll see every kid has their own little area where they're doing their own task. They use Teach Town as their curriculum, and every unit that is built for their grade bands, they build these big, you'll see those big task boxes right there. And then they also use a sub-system called the Skills, which is developmentally appropriate skills for students, and they create task boxes just to kind of, again, increase those, just building on those skills for those kids. Here's a picture of one of their LED rooms. To the far left is a gross motor room, so if they need some heavy work, they need to jump, they need to use a crash pad. They do have in the middle kind of a seclusion area that's paneled, so they really try to go hands-off as much as possible. And so by having those rooms that are, for lack of better words, padded, those are areas that those kids can, you know, kind of bump up against, and they're not going to hurt themselves, and we don't have to restrain. And then you'll see to the far right, these are kind of like pods, bunk beds, and the kids can rest and sleep if that's what's needed after they regulate and come back down to baseline. Something that's newer, so Mentor Cares opened up a, well, they bought a house that is right across the street, and the sole purpose is for independent living. They were able to fund this completely on their own. They spent around $750,000. So they bought the home and then renovated it so that students can practice independent living skills. And their goal is to open up an Airbnb that's ran by the students. So it was pretty impressive walking through that, that place. So our next steps, if this is something that we continue to go down and figure out this is what we want to do, is, first is we'll connect with our families. I think first and foremost, we need to see if there's an opportunity for our families to come back, between the scholarship providers and our separate facilities, I think those conversations will need to be had. And then we would engage in conversation with other county districts, see if there's an interest on their side. I think a lot of that. Am I good?
It's more for our TV audience.
Oh, sorry.
If it's captured.
Thanks. And then we'd work with the finance department to help us figure out the financial model that we want to, you know, outline for this. We would review the options for a building site, and then develop our mission and vision. That's the end. Any questions? Thoughts?
Phenomenal opportunity.
I have a friend whose grandson travels an hour and a half each way to Mentor for school, and I know how much that family hates that opportunity and...
Yeah.
And for us, we do have the space available. What we would do, what we would need to do is redistrict to free up one of our buildings to serve as a way to meet the needs of many, many, many of our students.
I think that's really important, is, we have an obligation to all of our students that, not just the ones that we're educating, but the ones that we're sending out. They're still ours.
Yep.
And we have an obligation to serve them as best we can. And this looks like a great model.
I was thinking about something on the way here today, and like, like, my own daughter goes to a separate facility, and I was realizing today, like, how much I had to sacrifice for her, not me, but sacrifice in, in effort to support my daughter. And I had to give up things in the community. Like, as much as we say they're still Titans, or they're still, you know, part of the school district, it's a challenge. She doesn't get home to 4:30 every day. So all those cool activities after school, she doesn't get to be part of. Her friends have changed greatly, because they can't be, you know, now in her community. They're more out in the areas that she's at. She's in Cleveland. So I just think what we do for our families matters, and this is one of the most important things I think we can do to keep them connected here to our community, to the Titans, and access to all the great programs that we have. And our kids should have that. And I think it'll attract a lot of our families, so...
You said that it's increasing. I mean, our K-2 is so, the numbers have just jumped.
Yes, yes. And that's K-2. So now we got to build three through five, and six through eight. It's going to continue as long as we keep them in our community.
What would be the timeline if all went well to open something like this?
We have a pretty aggressive timeline.
August?
Yeah, August.
So next year?
I think we could do it.
And we asked that same question when we were at Mentor, and she said she got the notice in March, make it happen. And we wouldn't start out full, I mean, we'd start out at a pace where we could make sure that quality was paramount, and then grow at a rate that makes sense.
It's been a little, a little gloomy around here a little bit, you know? Is Elvie going to pass? Are we going to, whatever? And this is really exciting. Like, I really have goosebumps just to know that, you know, we could take care of our kiddos. I don't want to say on our own, but on our own. And I'm sure, you know, we might not get all of them, but hopefully most of them, if not all. And I love it. Yeah.
As nervous as I am to present to you guys, it is like the most exciting thing, I think, in my career, to do something like this. So thank you for just having that opportunity.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like the board to consider for approval, items 9.01 and 9.02, personnel matters.
So much.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Dr. Ballard?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Nazaria?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, items 9.03 to 9.05, personnel matters.
So moved?
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazaria?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, items 10.01 to 10.10.
So moved.
Operations matters.
Have support.
Discussion.
I'm really excited about 10.01. We learned about this in the endowment. This will be a piece of music that only, it'll be like our own piece of music. Angelo Cortica from Longfellow brought it to the endowment group, and it was really exciting that our kids will be able to play an original piece of music that no one else has ever played. And it's like, it's ours. So that's just a point of it.
He's pretty amazing, too, but what a great opportunity.
He is what things have brought us. Great. But that's really, that's really cool for our kids.
I have two discussions. I'm glad for 10.02, more teachers becoming TESL certified, that's exciting. And at no cost to the district or to the teachers, so that's really amazing. And then, if the chair would be okay, and if Tony is okay, we talked about this beforehand. You know, with the money aspect, there's been questions, like, how are we, and why are we doing and buying and building? So if Tony could come up here and, if it would be okay, to explain why we need our shed, and why he won't build it, but he did say he would help plow if needed. He did, he said it.
I did say that.
I had to get it on record.
So the storage building that you're referencing is obviously for Lorraine High. Currently, for the past several years, we've been storing our fairly expensive machines outside in the gated area, and taking up academic space in the Career Tech area. It's been an issue for Career Tech, but just this year, it became a bigger issue, because they're looking for specific certifications. And when they got the inspection, and the inspector saw all of our equipment back in the auto shop and welding area lab, they wouldn't certify them because of that. So their suggestion was, we either move all this stuff out of there and/or enclose that space and take that space from Career Tech and separate it. Taking the space from Career Tech is not a good idea, so we looked into creating a separate maintenance facility. When they built all these buildings, they didn't build them with storage space. The state just doesn't approve space like that in these facilities. So we're stuck with having no space for any of our maintenance equipment. And what we're trying to do is be diligent on maintaining our, our, our machines in a healthy manner. And we can't do that when they're sitting outside all year long. The elements, especially during the winter. Many of those machines, they need to be plugged in to keep the batteries fresh, so we're not replacing batteries every six months. So there are quite a few issues. So that's why we are recommending this as a need for our maintenance department here. This is our biggest facility, and they have the most amount of equipment, and we just don't have the spaces to work.
We've been talking about this since I started, excuse me, since Billy opened in 16, I guess I was here before that. But yeah, the short answer is, it's cheaper to build a facility than it is to continuously damage the equipment that we have.
In 2016, we actually had this conversation before about building, building something on the south end to house that. And when, when, when we did this with the architects, we wanted to have storage for everybody. Well, we got almost everybody. I mean, the maintenance people had nowhere to put their equipment when it came. So this is, this has been nine years coming. And I mean, I, I understand that maybe it's hard to build it right now, but we need to do it, you know?
We have looked at several options and what to do. We've looked at several areas. We've even looked at just putting over a roof over the gated area. It would cost us more money to put a roof over that gated area because of the way it's designed than to build this building.
And I did ask Mr. Damacchia if we could just get a tarp with the Titan logo, and he said that that wouldn't be appropriate. So I tried.
A $5 tarp.
Yeah, he wanted $10.
One of those blue ones with the...
Yeah. Thank you. I have a chance.
All right. Thank you all.
Excellent. Roll call.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazaria?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. New business. We are now to that point, item 13. Lorraine City School Superintendent, Dr. Jeff Graham, has given the board notice of his intention to retire from his position with the district effective January 1, 2026, and contingent on the board approving his reemployment after retirement. The board has previously given public notice that Dr. Graham will be retiring from his position as superintendent, and is seeking reemployment with the board in the same position following his retirement. In accordance with the state law, the board will now give the public the opportunity to give comment on the issue of the board's reemployment of Dr. Graham after his retirement. This will not serve as a discussion, but rather a comment, period. The mic is open. Drew, do you want to lead off?
He passed it out.
He didn't. He didn't think that was funny. No?
Hearing and seeing none, and taking him off the spot. The next board meeting will be November 24, 2025, at 5:00 PM, right here at beautiful Lorraine High School.
Jay, we didn't have second hearing of the public. Can you just announce it?
Oh, we didn't. That's right, because I thought it was all the same. I'm sorry. Second hearing of the public. Thank you. And I, and I looked at, I looked at Lindsay and said, she didn't say anything tonight.
I was like, um, wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Lindsay, Larisha, I'm a teacher, preschool teacher at Helen Center. Let me do this. So my question is, I would like to know, who and how do I go about getting, sorry, just so that, getting some kind of covering for our preschool playgrounds? So with Regio being such a, you know, interest, we are trying to spend more time outside. And so this year, I've put together a whole snowsuit, you know, bank of fun items so we can go outside when it snows. I have rain jackets, and we're getting rain boots for the kids so we can go outside when it rains. But in the summertime, at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, we have found that kids don't want to be out there because it is so hot. It is blacktop, it radiates heat, you know, even the tire mulch is, is hot for the kids. So we had asked about some kind of covering, whether it be a structure or just some kind of tarp with a Titans logo. I will take that. And we did have Mr. Damacchia come over, and it was not an option for this year. We were told we could have a picnic table. I would like to have that picnic table still. But we just want some kind of covering so that we could do lessons out there, we could have activities going on out there without the kids, you know, five minutes in saying, it's so hot, it's so... "It's so hot, it's so hot." So I'm not really sure what that looks like, whether it's a Ross question for preschool, or if it's something that, you know, is a greater district issue, or is it a personal thing where I just need to get a bunch of grants and stuff together? But I would just like that considered. If we're going to go in full with regio, could we have some kind of outdoor area that would be appropriate in the early months of school and then the later months of school? So...
First of all, thanks for all the things you've listed that you're doing to get your kids, the rain jacket, snow stuff. Outside play is, is important regardless of what the weather and elements are. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
The other part, that's clearly not my, I mean, clearly, it is not my area of expertise, if I have one, but we'll sit together and see if we can brainstorm something that obviously is respectful to our taxpayers, but also gets our kids what they need to...
Because it's not just me. I mean, I would be selfish and just say, "Please give it to me."